All right, everybody, I'd like to call to order the Board of Supervisors for different Township Public Meeting for May 21st with the Pledge of Allegiance. Is the zoom on? I'd like to call to order the public hearing for HR 489. This is a public hearing to consider and possibly adopt an ordinance prohibiting commercial vehicles and trailers on public streets. Mr. McKenna and Chief Beatty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've marked the following board exhibits for the hearing this evening. Board Exhibit 1 is the proof of publication of the notice of the hearing in the Daily Local News on May 5th, 2025. Board Exhibit 2 is the proof of publication of the hearing notice from the Suburban Mainline Times on May 4th, 2025. Board Exhibit 3 is a copy of the email and distribution list to those in the township who wish to receive public hearing notifications, which was sent on May 14th, 2025. And Board Exhibit 4 is a copy of the ordinance that is under consideration by the board for this evening. Those are the board exhibits for the hearing.
Chief Beatty, anything you want to add?
No, this was brought to our attention, actually beginning back at the end of 2024, by Supervisor Carlotta Johnson Peal and some residents for vehicles that were oversized and parked on a residential street. In reviewing the traffic unit, the traffic committee in reviewing the current ordinance on file realized that there was limited enforcement actions for commercial vehicles and dumpsters on township roads and roads within Tru different Township. And this was, research was done, and this document was prepared to address those concerns and presented before the board for review.
No, thank you, Chief Beatty. The only thing I would add is this document has been circulated quite a bit. We had a version we were thinking about and then...
Yeah, you had authorized advertisement, and that's when Chief mentioned that we discovered one additional change, so we, out of abundance of caution, came back, had it reauthorized, had that change made, and now it is ready for consideration of adoption.
Yeah, no, thank you. I think this ordinance as drafted addresses the problem, gives the police enforcement mechanism that will make our communities better, and I'm supportive. Any board comment? Oh, I have a motion. First, let's get a motion. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comment besides what I just said? Public comments? Hearing none? It's a roll call vote. Supervisor Humble?
Aye.
Supervisor Holt?
Aye.
Supervisor Gussi?
Aye.
Supervisor Wasaki?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. I'm going to adjourn the public hearing HR 489 and call to order a public hearing for 491. This is a public hearing to consider and possibly adopt a zoning ordinance amendment to allow the age-qualified, single-family detached and semi-detached dwellings, twins in the C1 district. Mr. McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've marked the following board exhibits for the hearing this evening. Board Exhibit 1 is the proof of publication of the hearing notice in the Daily Local News that ran on May 5th and May 12th, 2025. Board Exhibit 2 is the proof of publication of the hearing notice that ran in the Suburban Mainline Times on May 4th, 2025. Board Exhibit 3 is a copy of the email distribution list to those who wish to receive public hearing notifications from the township dated May 14th, 2025. Board Exhibit 4 is a copy of the review letter from the Chester County Planning Commission for the proposed ordinance dated April 17th, 2025. Board Exhibit 5 is a copy of the ordinance which is under consideration for approval this evening. And Board Exhibit 6 is a copy of the applicant's petition for the zoning amendment, which was dated March 7th, 2025. Those are the board exhibits for the hearing this evening. And that leads to my reminder to the board that this came about through a petition from the property owner along Russell Road for consideration of a zoning amendment. That went through some reviews, at least with my office and staff, to try to address some of the concerns that we had, and it was authorized for advertisement at last month's meeting. And so that ordinance is now in front of you for consideration. I believe the applicant is here. I think I saw him earlier walk in. Mr. Houtter is here, in case you have any questions or comments for him.
Thank you. Ms. McPherson, do you have any comments?
So, yeah, I mean, I think this is kind of what we talked about before. It's an age-qualified. There are some qualifiers to it, but, I mean, the applicant, I'm sure, can talk about the specifics of the plan that he's proposing, which would be on Russell Road.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do you have any board comments, or do you want the applicant to come forward and give us a little rundown? Would that be helpful? Yeah, probably good idea. You guys want to... Yeah, yeah. We've heard a lot of this before, but if you could remind us all, thanks. Yeah, I know we've heard a lot of this before, but if you could give us a reminder.
Charlie Houter from Havifer Development. We are the contract purchaser for the property and came to the township and its informal planning committee to pursue different development ideas for the property. And we started with one idea, and that got shaped and molded into a very different idea. But, you know, much less density, age-restricted, limited to twins and singles. Our property is designed to be twins, and it seemed like a good way to craft a change to see one that would allow a very narrow list of properties that would fall into the category of C1, but also make their way through all the other requirements that are very strictly set out in this proposed text amendment to allow certain low-density residential to happen in certain areas of C1. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at your disposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any board comments or questions?
I would just say, I mentioned my comments on this project at the last meeting, but I think this is a sensible redevelopment idea that is good for the township in that it is very restricted, it is very limited in its scope, and we all worked very hard to make sure that this was the right idea for the right parcels of the township. Like you said, C1, age-restricted, single-family detached and semi-detached twins, which are the only types of building that's going in here, along a main arch hill, right? I believe something like that.
Not on a main.
Not on a main, right, right. So that's big, which it's, think about that, it's C1, but not on a main, so restricting it even further.
All of Lancaster Avenue would be eliminated from residential.
Right. And, you know, the devil can't be in the details, so I encourage all residents that may be affected by this to appear at the planning commission, get their ideas and their thoughts and feelings, make sure they get the development that they want to see that's appropriate there. But I feel confident that we're going to have a very nice end result here. You've indicated that, you've promised that to us, and compared to what's there right now at the property to what will be there at the property, I think it'll be a very welcome addition to the township.
Mr. Holt, just if I could interject one thing, because you reminded me. I have had two rather lengthy meetings with neighbors and have had some dialogue with neighbors outside of those meetings, and I've thought they've been very helpful, very constructive. I don't want to speak for any neighbor in particular, but I think that the condition of the current buildings, which are pretty appalling in general, but especially for a township like this one, and are only getting worse, will be eliminated, and this text amendment would allow a development to happen that would kind of land the property back in the good graces of the kind of development that should exist in this township. And I do expect that the neighbors, both in the aesthetics and in some of the particulars of the land development process, will be, continue to be involved and helpful.
I thank you very much for that engagement with the community. It's critical to see that, and I know you have done that, and I've spoken with numerous residents, and they've indicated that, you know, they've reached out and been able to talk to you, so thank you for that. And again, I do support this, and it's really reflected on the very narrow scope of the amendment type of project we're going to see. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Holt. Any other board comments or questions? Resident comments or questions?
Sorry, did you ask your resident comments?
Yeah. Yes, resident comments or questions?
I'm sorry?
Halsey, H-A-L.
You might call.
John. Halsey, H-A-L-S-E-Y. And I live on Russell Road across from the property. And about 10 of the neighbors met with Charlie as a result of his letter asking us to meet with him, which you attended, and the concept looks great. The concept of developing that property with some homes, some joint units with the townhouses, as he showed in his concept drawing, and it's not a final drawing, but as far as resident feeling, this is such an improvement over some other options that we've looked at possibly could do and people could possibly try in that development. I met with Charlie, and my concern, which I showed him, which is not part of the design, but it is a concern, was the fact that the roadways that they're showing were on an incline, which is extremely steep, much steeper than a fire engine is allowed to enter a property. The fire engine has a restriction, about one foot rise for so many 20 feet. The area that they show that road going up for a fire engine to enter would be about a 15-foot rise in 30 feet, way above the possibility for fire engine. And because of the fire engine's low, front end being so long, the back end being so long behind the wheels, the fire engine bottoms out. It's not the fact that power can't get up that hill. And Charlie and I discussed that. One concern, and this is not, you're not doing the design, but one, as a neighbor, if you lived on Russell Road, I pointed out to Charlie that the existing road that goes along Russell Road, which is part of the old Synthase Road, that road has entrance and exits where the headlights are not shining directly into a neighbor's living room. The problem with the concept drawing that was shown was that the road was set up so that the road would have every vehicle coming out at night shining its headlights right into Rob Sappelik's home and Dan Leon's home. And I did not think that that is something that you would like to see if you were putting in a development with a new concept, and there's an existing road that could be used and expanded so that the traffic going in and out would be tangential to Russell Road parallel, and the headlights coming in, coming out, would not present a terrible harsh situation on a neighbor directly across the street, 20 feet away from the exit. And I hope that that gets implemented into the final concept drawing. The other area that the residents were concerned about was the parking, and the concept drawing showed 18 parking spots, where I'm sure that the property requirements are about 36 or more for 18 of these townhouses. Because if you have 18 homes and two have a nice Christmas party or holiday party, there isn't enough parking there to represent additional parking that would be needed for any group gathering of the people. So we said, also, Russell Road, as you know, is very narrow. There's no parking on Russell Road. Now, we don't have signs currently, but I could see if we do develop this property and have a number of townhomes, and they have parties and what have you, people are going to start parking on Russell Road. It's going to create a very dangerous situation, and as Mike Beatty knows, when you put a very narrow road and put people forced to come out on the road, park halfway into the road, halfway into the dirt, you're going to have people pulling across the yellow line, you're going to have accidents. And I would hope that we put signs on Russell Road, no parking, or be towed, to make sure that that is not an unsafe situation if we develop this property in this manner. Overall, I think that the concept is great, and I know the planning committee will look into the details, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I would encourage you to go to planning when the plans are presented. I think that's where a lot of these things will be sorted out. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
My name is Evo Jansen, spelled I-V-O-J-A-N-S-E-N. I live at 1665 Russell Road. So what I understand is up for vote tonight, right, is a change of the zoning ordinance text to allow residential development in C1, correct? With all the restrictions? Yeah? So, a couple of things I struggle with is why not change it to residential zoning? Why keep it as commercial but allow for residential development? It kind of gives me the feeling like you're trying to have the best of both worlds, and when I looked at the plan, and Charlie was very generous to meet with us and give us all these details, I see that the impervious surface of the proposal's 46.8%, right? That's what you shared with me? Which is more than any residential zoning allows. I understand that the buildings will be only 25 feet apart from each other. That's less than is allowed under any residential zoning ordinance, as I understand it. And so it seems to be a little bit like this proposal here to change the rules of C1 zoning to allow for residential construction is kind of like trying to have your cake and eat it too. Right? You're going to allow residential construction, but you don't play by the residential rules. And that I'm very uncomfortable with. Then let's at least play by the residential rules. Let's write that into the zoning ordinance change as well. And so, much of the proposal I liked, pivoting a little bit here, much of the proposal I liked, what I don't like is that there are nine massive buildings going to be across the street, very close together, very different from how the homes are across the street where we live. There's about seven, there are seven homes across the street that are, on average, about 70 feet apart. On average, they're less than half the size of the nine buildings that will be put up across the street. So I think it's a very disharmonious plan from that point of view. So what I would ask Charlie is to scale back the proposal a little bit, have fewer buildings, maybe smaller size, but at the very least, I think as a township, as a board, you should consider that if you're going to change commercial zoning to allow for residential development, let's play at least by the residential rules in terms of impervious surface and all these other things. And as I understand it, the proposal that is being put forward would not play by those residential rules, and that just doesn't seem right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Lisa Sappelik, C-E-P-I-E-L-I-K. I live at 105 Sheldrick Drive, right across from where the development would be. My husband and I also are happy that this would be something different than last time when the board was given a proposal and told that this was, the ALF was only going to go in a certain location. It almost was put across the street right from my house, and that would have been a three-story monstrosity that we would not have been happy with. And so that's why I'm concerned that when we reword this, that it is done in a way that we really know what properties you are going to be affecting, because that was not put forth last time, and it affected properties that you didn't think it was going to. Our concern is just like the last concern, is that you are putting in the middle of our neighborhood this dense population. We would like to see it to be different when we've got 18,000 square foot lots, and this now will be using the R4 square footage, which means that it will only be 6,000 per twin or 12,000 per building. We don't think that's enough for our neighborhood. We don't think that fits in with the way that our neighborhood is set up with large lots, two-car garages, long driveways. That just does not fit in with what we have. So while we are on board with there being a change made, we'd like your wording to be different in when you set this up so that you take into consideration the neighborhood that you are going into, and that it is harmonious with what we already have, and you're protecting us, the neighbors that have already lived here for years and years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Any board comment or questions? I appreciate your input. I think at this time, we're ready to vote. I do encourage you all to go to planning. I mean, if this passes tonight, I encourage you to go to planning and bring up your concerns, because I think a lot of them would be addressed as part of the planning process. As you know, we've looked at many options for the property. I mean, there's lots of plans that have come up, some that you guys have never seen because we've just not been interested at all. And we do think this is a pretty good plan for this location, given all the restrictions we have and what it looks like. So, anyway, I'm going to vote yes. I think it's a good amendment. But with that, supervisor, is that a roll call vote? Supervisor Humble?
Aye.
Supervisor Holt?
Aye.
Supervisor Gussi?
Aye.
Supervisor Wasaki?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I'm going to adjourn the public hearing for HR 491 and call to order the public meeting. We'll start with announcements. In observance of Memorial Day, Township offices will be closed at 2:00 PM on Friday, May 23rd. Will be closed Monday, May 26th. Next, we go into approval of the minutes for the April 21st meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved.
Mr. Chairman, you had someone public...
Oh, I'm sorry, you have a public comment? Sure. On the minutes.
Thank you for your time. Of the minutes are remarks concerning something I said at the meeting on, well, whatever it was, the 21st of April. First of all, I understand the problems of taking notes at meetings. I've been secretary of more than one organization for many, many years, and I know how hard it is, with compliments to Mrs. Hoffman, to take notes at any meeting and get them accurate. Now, the meeting notes for the board meetings necessarily must be reasonably general, otherwise you would have reams of paper to publish every year, every time you have a meeting. It doesn't make sense to require that. But what I would like to do is request, with your permission, that a word, now it may sound trivial, but it's only a word, but words mean a lot, this. It says, "He also shared his suggestion for language in the ordinance." Let me see. Oh, here it is. "Suggested that members of the Development Subcommittee recuse themselves from voting on this ordinance." Now, it doesn't sound important, but it is important. I'm telling you, and I'm justifying it as well, but maybe I should just tell you. Thank you. What I said was that any member of the Board of Supervisors who will be voting on a matter before the Development Subcommittee, when it comes to public hearing or other public vote, recuse themselves from the vote because they have, actually, will actually be voting on that subject twice. They are giving at least tacit...
Wait, let me just, just a second. You just want to change? You're saying, instead of being specific to the ordinance we were discussing last month...
I'm sorry?
You're trying to say, instead of being specific to the ordinance we were discussing last month, you want your comment to pertain to all ordinance that are discussed at the Development Committee? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, I just want to, I just wanted to, I would hope that it would include the idea that any member of the board, or other member of any board, who is on, who discusses a matter on the development, during the Development Subcommittee, not be voting on that same matter when it comes to public vote in order to pass or reject, because they have, they will be voting on that subject twice.
Wait, wait a second. What do you got? I mean, I don't really care if we change it. Yeah, I don't care. Do you care? Okay. Okay.
Thank you. I'll write something up and send it to Mrs....
We'll take care of it. I think, I think I understand what you want.
Thank you.
This is hard. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
You can change it. So with the proposed, I mean, I think what the change will propose is voting on an ordinance that was discussed through the Development Subcommittee. Is that the change we're going to propose? Okay. With that change, any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
We just voted on the meeting minutes, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the minutes are approved with that. That's as far as we got here, yeah. We approve that.
Yeah.
The board met in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss legal matters. Supervisor liaison reports.
Thank you.
Supervisor Humble?
Thank you. I have no report on Parks and Rec, other than to say the next meeting is Wednesday, June 11th, at 7:00 PM. Regarding the zoning hearing board, I do want to call attention to the meeting is tomorrow at 7:00 PM in this room, and there is an appeal of broad interest that I want to call to your attention. It's appeal number 202515, application of Alan Brown Jr. of 927 Mount Pleasant Avenue in Wayne, located in a R4 residential district, has filed for a special exception pursuant to Section 208-33D6 to permit a student home in a single-family dwelling. That's a variance that they would have to get in order to have the permit for the student home. This is the Mount Pleasant neighborhood. They have long dealt with problems from the student homes. I do want to say that anybody can file for their special exception. It doesn't mean they're getting it, but for those people who are interested in this matter, I would encourage you to show up to tomorrow's zoning hearing board meeting to make your opinions heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Humble. Also, I want to mention to the public that Supervisor Humble is now the zoning hearing board liaison, so we made that switch just a couple weeks ago, so just so everybody knows that.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. I think we didn't announce that. Supervisor Holt?
Thank you. The Library Board of Trustees met on Thursday, April 24th. Here are the highlights. Rob Williams, Chair of the Historic Commission, gave a presentation on planning for the, oh, no, the U.S. Semi-Quincentennial Celebration. Thank you. It helps to be able to read it and not just go off the cuff. And to initiate working with the library on events. Joe Duraco discussed options for future library facilities, upgrading the building at Strafford has an estimated cost of many millions and will therefore require a years-long fundraising campaign. Meanwhile, the current building must be maintained, and that was discussed and things that we can do for the budget for 2026. Sarah Roski of the Paoli Library organized a very successful Big Teen Art Week during the TE spring break, giving teens opportunity to work with several local professional artists. Overall visits to the libraries appear to have stabilized comparing 2025 to 2024 with increases in Paoli and a small drop in Strafford. Kate Kerrigan of the Friends of the True Different Public Libraries reported that they had a good first quarter, and the next book sale is planned for June 11th through the 13th. They are also planning for the library's 60th anniversary in 2026. They are also planning for the library's sixtieth anniversary in 2026. The board approved the updated collections policy. Other policy updates are in process. I thank Supervisor Baskar for these notes as he is traveling abroad right now, visiting his first grandchild in Denmark. Congratulations, Baskar, if he's watching. Pardon, did I say that right? No, okay, good.
Oh, I said, which he's not watching.
Oh, he's not watching. Yeah, he probably shouldn't be watching. It's six hours ahead. Maybe he is. Maybe he has jet lag. We don't know.
So congratulations, Baskar.
Congratulations, Baskar, is the main point I want to get across to him, wherever he is. The Arts Commission met on May first and had an invited guest, Jim Brean from Westchester Public Arts Commission, who shared his insights, experience, and perspective. Really appreciated him attending. The commission would like to have an immediate impact for the community, and they are working on bringing art from the community and Tridiferent Artists into the Township Building. You can see some empty walls around here. That would be nice to get some art on the walls. So they're looking to doing that. They're also looking to be an integral part of Community Day with an intergenerational activity. I don't know what that'll be, but. Another 2025 activity will be to partner with the open space organization and a rock painting enterprise, and the group has designed a logo and slight revisions are in progress. So look out for that to come. The next meeting of the Arts Commission, I believe, is going to be in July. And finally, I would like to make a motion to appoint Chris Robey and Leigh Anne Nacario to the Library Foundation Board, and I fully support these nominations.
Second.
Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you for serving. Any else? Thanks. Supervisor Gussi?
All right. We will be hearing a lot about the Historical Commission and their important work later tonight, so I'm just going to touch on a couple of points here. The Historical Commission hosted a successful neighborhood walk this past weekend, highlighting key aspects of Berwyn's history. The tour included themes of railroad history, the development of Berwyn Village, adaptive reuse, segregation, and architectural evolution, and even the history of the pipe organ. So thank you to everyone who made the historical walk a success. There were about fifty visitors across three groups, and it was clear people love learning about the history of their local area. Neighbors showed up, shared stories, and discovered connections. So big thank you to all the interpreters, guides, prep team, and especially Ernie Falcone of the Historical Commission for leading and organizing the walk. It was a wonderful day, and I encourage everyone to participate in future neighborhood walks held by the commission. I also wanted to comment that the Historical Commission has an outstanding senior intern from Conestoga High School this month, Rowan Bello, who I see is actually here tonight. He is approaching his work with a technical computer science lens, and his projects will include or are including developing an audio tour of key general homes in Tridiferent, learning and teaching the commission how to use A.I. tools to digitize historic documents from the Chester County Archives, particularly translating cursive, old cursive to print, and then, time permitting, applying some of these tools to map the seventeen-seventy-seven British depredations in Tridiferent. I didn't know that word, but it means the raids on homes and thefts of goods and livestock that occurred. So the commission is lucky to have him, and I think everyone will enjoy hearing more about the historical work, commission's work, I think, next on the agenda. I also have to cover Supervisor Baskar's report for the Environmental Advisory Council tonight, as he could not attend, as we heard. The EAC met on Tuesday, April twenty-second. There will be an end of products, projects presentation on Thursday, May twenty-second, tomorrow, from eleven to one P. M. at the Township Building. It will cover the recently completed Crabby Creek stormwater infiltration projects, including performance monitoring results and the dam removal and stream restoration at the Lorimer Preserve by the Open Land Conservancy. There will be a light lunch, and site visits will follow. So if you want to attend this, please email Ann Murphy at annmurphy2@verizon.net to help with that event. On March thirty-first, there was a good turnout for the Crabby Creek invasive plant poll, and the previously planted trees are looking healthy. A macro-invertebrate study at Crabby Creek was planned for April twenty-seventh, and there was a productive maintenance day at the library rain garden with more planting that occurred later in April as well. The new plastic bag and wrap collection at the library is off to a good start. With enough volunteers, they're now considering a second collection site to replace the one that was previously in the Township Building's lobby. The next EAC meeting will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh at seven P. M. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Gussi. Supervisor Waisaki?
Yes, I have one report. The Pension Trustees met on May fourteenth for their quarterly review of the Police Pension Fund, the four-fifty-seven Plan for Non-Uniformed Employees, and the OPEB Trust. After examining first quarter and other performance information and discussing the assumed rate of return for pension investments, the trustees concluded that no significant changes in investment strategy were currently needed. The trustees will continue monitoring the uncertain economic and market conditions to determine if any significant changes in investment strategy become necessary. The next meeting of the Pension Trustees is on August thirteenth. Yes, yes, yes. I was just looking at this, and I forgot it anyway. So now I'm going to move for the reappointment of Stanford Nishikawa to the Pension Trustees. So move. That's a motion.
Second. Any board comments? I thank him for his service. He does a good job.
Yeah, Stanford has been on the Pension Trustees for a number of years, and he is focused and always has insightful analysis.
I think the Township is well-served by these guys. We're really lucky to have them. Any public comment or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Stanford. And then, Ms. McPherson.
Thank you, Chairman Miller, members of the board. Yes, I'm making a motion for the appointment of Michael Pilco for the UCC Board. This would fill out the board. The UCC Board basically meets as needed if there's issues with building permits or folks looking to get some sort of variance request from the Uniform Construction Code. So Michael is a local architect, very familiar with the codes.
Thank you, Ms. McPherson. We had the opportunity to meet him earlier, and I think he's pretty impressive. So I'd like to offer a motion to appoint Michael Pilco to the UCC Board. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any board comments or questions? Any public comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes Supervisor Liaison reports. Now, we have a report from the Historical Commission. Mr. Williams.
I guess I couldn't do it. It's all right. Thank you. Thank you. So, good evening. My name's Rob Williams. I'm the Chair of the Historical Commission of the Township. The commission is one of the many advisory boards that reports to the supervisors. This presentation has a bunch of pictures in it. I'm going to make some notes about what the pictures are. We've had a very active 2024, including an active beginning of 2025. This picture here is one of our many walks. This particular one was the Trayburn neighborhood, which I didn't know had a historic house in it, but it does have the original farmhouse of the Thomas Brothers, who had a orchard, fifty-acre orchard, that eventually turned into seventy-two beautiful homes, which is Trayburn today. But that farmhouse is still in the middle of the neighborhood, and we had one of our walks, and we were very fortunate. The owners gave the talk and, in a rare opportunity, invited us into the house. And so this particular property was built around eighteen-twenty. It's beautiful inside, beautiful outside, and it's one of those many great walks we had. Just as a reminder of what the commission is and does, we have two purposes. One is to elevate all of our understanding, residents, visitors of the history of Tridiferent, which is rich and more than three centuries long. And also, we have the job of, through that education, seeking to preserve the heritage of the sites, the buildings, the views that we have in Tridiferent. And I'll show you that in just a minute. I want to say one thing. I'm extremely proud of my group. My commission has been very good. This has been a long road to learn what this field is. It's not just history. It has to do with the development of the land, remembering where the eras of our history came from, which parts of those histories are still standing. And so I'm very happy that, you heard about Ernie Falcone is our walk leader. Janice has been working on a project, which I'll show later, with an interactive map. Eric Williams is my deputy, working on some research. Mark Dixon is an author. Some of you may recognize him from books and articles that were written in Chester County magazines. Pearl is our great registrar and motivator. She really keeps us moving, and we're very thankful to have Robert Emanuel as our staff liaison. And we're very thankful, of course, also, to have Dr. Gussi as our liaison. This is out of our Tridiferent Library, and this is important to remember what Tridiferent is. One of the most historical areas in this greater southeast area in the Great Valley. But this history is hidden. It's largely hidden. Many of you drive by some landmarks that you recognize, but I would say a good three-quarters of the great history that's still standing is somewhat hidden from view, and this is an important facet. Where we all started was the Great Valley. The Great Valley was the breadbasket for Philadelphia. Very fertile ground, crops, most of this, if you can imagine this valley from Fraser up to Bridgeport, all of the crops that were in the valley, which we sit in right now, was going up to Bridgeport and then by water down to Philadelphia. This is what was settled first. It's what the Welsh were really quite enamored when they first settled here, and thereby we get the name, Treadiferent, Wide Cultivated Valley. That's something to remember because this next picture was impactful when we first saw this in our, basically, research. The two towns to the east and the west of us, Upper Marion, East Whiteland, just by this picture alone, you can see a very different landscape than we have in Tridiferent. And this is not by accident. This large green area in the middle is not by accident. This is the work of the people who came before us to make sure that we had green space, that we retained green space, and that's both public initiative, private initiative. We are very different than our east and west neighbors, and that's something, when you think about Chesterbrook and how green Chesterbrook is, when you think about our hillsides, where our houses are, they haven't been, you know, clear-cut to make neighborhoods. This is something to relish and something to protect. So what is this history that I was talking about? What we're doing in the commission right now is trying to create narratives around the layers of our history, our three-hundred years of history. And what happens, like any history, there's eras of time when things occurred. Of course, we know, most of us, that there was a colonial era with the farming, but we also have this important, less-than-a-year period of what was called the Philadelphia Campaign, when the Revolutionary War came through Chester County. What most people know is the Battle of Brandywine, and then eventually the British wind up in Philadelphia. We have two times when that war came to Tridiferent. First was when the British arrived in September seventeen-seventy-seven. Twelve thousand British troops squatted in our town. Think of occupations you hear in contemporary world today. Twelve thousand, and I'll show you a picture later. We only had a hundred parcels of land, a hundred families at the time, so you can imagine what that impact was. But then, things didn't stop with the colonial era. We started building, and that's where, up on top of the hill, South Valley, started developing. We get the roads, we get the pikes, we get the tollhouses, wagons turn into trains. There's, train stops are developed in a very deliberate way to create villages, and then the villages blossom, and then we have, you know, basically, small towns like Paoli today. We have enduring institutions that have survived, and they're still around. And then finally, many of you know, because of the railroad mostly, we have these gentleman estates, these incredible mansion properties, but also the properties for the people who worked on the mansions or built the mansions. Those are still around. The reason I highlight those first five in orange is that's what our survey, we have a survey of three-hundred-and-sixty-seven buildings. That survey covers those first five eras. The lighter orange is eras that we haven't researched yet, and yet we have buildings that are standing that need to be understood. Here's examples. Some of you will recognize these. Colonial era, if you're on North Valley Road, one of the most amazing intact mills of this area is still standing. It is on the National Register of Historic Places. It has a Pennsylvania marker, and it still has the works inside the building. It's not open to the public. It's privately owned, but it's still just a magnificent building. We've all passed down Contention Lane. We've seen this crazy barn go, in fact, it was one of our interns said, wow, what's that? Well, that's where the Hessians during the colonial era stayed, the general, and they were on the, basically, the eastern wing of those twelve thousand British and Hessian troops. Then you skip ahead, you know, close to a half a century, and we get these beautiful, amazing buildings that are still standing. In this case, this is Devon Prep. I just love driving down the driveway just to do the circle and seeing what a magnificent structure that is. And then we have amazing buildings that aren't quite so immense and majestic. If any of you have driven down Bradford, you know where the Picopost Country Club is. Adjacent to is the Small School. This barn is the last remaining building of the Chesterbrook Farm. It was designed by Frank Furness. Many of you know his name as the preeminent Philadelphia architect, and yet we still have this building standing. We're lucky to have a school that occupies that building and keeps it up. And then we have the cutest little buildings. This little guy on the right, one of my favorites, is a little filling station. So this is in the era of the nineteen-thirties, when cars were, you know, more prominent, the railroad was less prominent, but these little filling stations were found up and down Route Thirty, and this is the one of the last standing of this type in, you know, our region, and we're lucky to have it, and it always seems to turn into a flower shop. The inventory of our wonderful properties is extensive, and this is work that was done before my commission and my people were working on it. We have twelve buildings that are on the National Register of Historic Places. We have another sixteen that are eligible, which means the state has recognized them as potentially being eligible for placing on the National Register. We have the largest number of these kind of buildings in Chester County outside Westchester. So we're very lucky to have this, and all the eras, again, all these buildings represent the different eras. All right. I'm going to dwindle on this picture. If you all want to get your iPhones out, your smartphones, this is the one time you can be rude in a public meeting, but that Q R code there will bring you to... to something we're launching right now, which is an interactive map of all of our 367 properties in Tridifrin. I thank Robert Emanuel for his clever map skills, taking a large database that's been sitting around for 24 years and figuring out how we can present this to the public. By the way, this is one of the key elements of our strategic plan that was developed in 2023, is how to bring this information to the public. And so here you go. You, of course, will be able to see this in the published document for this meeting. Dr. Gossi mentioned our walks. The walk in Berwind this past weekend was our sixth. The reason we have these walks is we discovered that people don't know what's in their own neighborhood. Mr. Falcone, our walk leader, has designed these walks specifically to get neighbors out, neighbors who don't know about the historic house. They may know the house is there. They don't know anything about it. They walk the dog in front of it all the time. But now, we bring those owners out. The owners come and talk to their neighbors about what's it like, why did they buy a historic house? What's it like to own it? What's it like to maintain it? And frankly, through all that comes the pride of ownership of those buildings. So we're very fortunate. This past Sunday, I want to give a shout out to the Christian Science Church. We built this whole walk around their willingness to open up their church to the public. And it really ended well with the organ concert with their incredible music program. All right, what about the future? If you know your calendar, we are one year shy of Supervisor Holt. Did a good job. Most people just go with semi-Quinn, the Semi-Quinn Centennial, which is the 250th anniversary or commemoration of the Declaration of Independence. I was around for the bicentennial. Remember it. This one is going to be probably even more important, mostly because it's going to take up the entire country. There was a concerted effort to have all states involved. The bicentennial is largely a 13 colonies kind of event. This is, you're going to hear all the way out to Hawaii, commemoration, not so much for the, you know, what happened in downtown Philadelphia, but what does the declaration mean? And what are all the elements? We will be having events related to that, including readings of the Declaration in public, followed by commemorations and celebrations. As was mentioned, I'm going around to the different boards and nonprofits to stir up interest. Angela Scully, one of our residents, is leading an effort to bring Tridifrin and Easttown together to do some planning. Those meetings will start next month. And Easttown has already identified about, I guess there are 40 different people from 30 different organizations and agencies to start designing. So this is also an advertisement for volunteers. This is going to be an exciting time. There's going to be many projects. We need volunteers. I mentioned the British camp, Camp Tridifrin. That's the way the British spelled it. 14,000. The place where they were camped was from, if you know where Te Garden Park is and you know where Den Bresia Park and Halville, the corner where the new elementary school. Think of that distance. 12,000 British and Hessian troops in that space. We have been talking to British units to come visit us. And in 2027, two years from now, which would be the 250th for the encampment of the British, we may see some action. So stay alert to that. Keep your bayonets at home. And then finally, we've been working very deliberately with Chester County. Chester County has been doing an amazing job of bringing this across all, what are we, 73 municipalities? And so there's this last interpretive network. We're actually working with our neighbors to the west, East Whiteland, Easttown, Willistown, and Malvern Borough on an interpretive story for this Battle of Paoli, which was, and if you didn't know the Battle of Paoli, the British left Halville Corner, where the new elementary school will be, walked Sweetsford Road all the way down to, Wegmans wasn't there, but they turned left at Wegmans, went up the hill into Malvern, and without firing a single shot, used their bayonets to kill and wound 300 colonial forces in what's called the Battle of Paoli, which turned into a battle cry of, remember Paoli. Much like, remember Pearl Harbor of that day. Remember Paoli was the phrase. We also have a large number of Pennsylvania markers. You've seen some of these. Baptist Church, Berwin School Fight was the one that's most notable recently. Many of you probably visited the Wharton Eschrick. We were missing two markers. And so we worked with the state. And the state has forged new versions of the markers that are missing. And we're going to have dedications for these markers. In particular, I'm excited about General Howell getting recognized again. We'll probably wind up somewhere near Te Garden, bringing up that marker so that we remember. And this is from the state. The state recognizes our history. Dr. Gossi mentioned deprivations. And this is a project that our intern indeed is working on. The document you see in the lower left is that rather nice script, but hard-to-read script. We're researching, and Eric Williams and our team is leading, looking at where the British plundered or took money or took both from our residents. The map on the top is from Chester County Archives. And if you look at where the dots are, the stars, every one of those properties was somehow affected and documented by the British taking nails, taking rails, taking cows, taking rum, taking flour. And those were all recorded and are available through Chester County Archives, but they're really hard to read. So our intern is working on that, as well as an audio tour. And we're very lucky to have Rowan on our team this summer. Just to close out, this is the Chester County Plan for what's called Heritage Centers. These are small history buildings. And we have worked very deliberately with the Duportai House, some representatives here tonight, to have that image in the center. The Duportai House is the building on the left in Chesterbrook. And the little white building to the right is actually going to be the new small museum that is, will relay the history of Tridifrin as well as some of the surrounding townships around us. It's modeled on a beautiful building down in Marshallton, west of West Chester. And the Duportai House board and team are working deliberately to create the nonprofit and do the fundraising. And that's the beginning of design. So we'll have a little bit of visitation. This is all part of a Chester County tourism plan as well. And we'll be bringing in, you know, people for heads, beds, and meals to come visit our town and learn a little more. And then getting to the real point, if you remember my second message on missions, we are protecting our buildings through ordinances. Through, we have a zoning overlay that allows for the protection of our historic resources. And Fred and Laura Wampler wrote to us and said, we would like our house designated in this overlay. And so we brought that to the board, I guess, two months ago. And you can see on the right, the things that wind up is they get expanded permitted uses. They have some incentives for the physical layout. And then there is, however, a process for reviewing if somebody wanted to buy that property and demolish the buildings, which the Wampler's aren't going to do. But, you know, what this does is it supports us for the future. In the world of official recognition, Tridifrin is one of 49 certified local governments in the state. That's a designation that's given through the National Park Service, down through Harrisburg. What this means is we have been recognized in the past for the quality of our preservation programs and the way we protect our buildings. By having this designation, we are, we get the benefit of getting grants that no other townships can get. And so far, we've received three grants, working on projects. And will be, one, this last grant will be on the agenda for later tonight. The work that needs to be done in order to retain this certification, there's a lot of qualifications. And the state has advised us that we are deficient in areas. And so even though you can't read the fine print, we're going to be reading the fine print and make sure that we're up to date with retaining this certification and making sure that the procedures and processes that allow us to keep this will be updated in our ordinance and incentives. And then just as far as, one of the most important things that we can do with our advisory boards is have them very strong, mindful, competent, capable. So we've done a lot of training. Through Chester County, there's a statewide education program for planning. Two of us have gone through the whole four-course series. Ernie has just finished two courses on, so we actually know how to read the Municipal Planning Code. It's not a light tome to read, but we've done it. And then finally, to Mr. Burgos' credit, we've been working on a, there's a property up on Yellow Springs Road that was going to be, well, selected for demolition because of the hazard presented by the three years of floods and basically rubble coming down from the hillside. When that affects a historic property, FEMA is obliged to mitigate it to the community. And what they've done in this case is we had training. That's a picture of the training that occurred in this room. And what we learned is how to do analysis of our buildings up to the level of applying for the National Register for our properties, which is a lot of work, a lot of detail. And the woman on the left is one of the historic preservation experts in the county and led that. I want to bring this chart back to the first picture of the aerial photo of our township and our, remember our neighboring townships. Landscape 3 is the master plan for Chester County. It basically tells what we should be doing over the course of 10 years. I would assert that we've done an amazing job, Tridifrin, at preserving as best we can, given as much development as we have. And this is done, again, through private and public means. Private means is Chesterbrook, with all the, you know, wonderful open space that's there and trails. It's also done through the Open Land Conservancy, buying up and preserving certain properties so that there are six open land, I don't know, they're each 20-plus, I guess they're more than that, you know, 30-plus acres. So Tridifrin's done a good job. And that's why you see all that green in that aerial photo. I would say that this body of senior staff and elected officials for the last 10 years have been working on Protect very well, which is principally stormwater. You know, avoiding the erosion that has affected so many of our towns. I'm mindful of the map that the Stormwater Task Force made and how many little pins are across the entire township, how many people are affected. I think we've done a great job over the 10 years. I would say the third goal of the county, and it should be ours, is this appreciate, which means appreciating and sustaining our heritage as best we can. Mindful of the balance between development, like we've heard tonight, zoning changes. But still, how can we retain these properties and these views that we have in Tridifrin? Both the very visible ones and the hidden ones. So to end, we are working against our comprehensive plan, which was published in 2021. We have eight-step actions. We've been working deliberately. Got two finished, five underway. We'll update our survey of properties in the future. But we've been working hard and look forward to all of you supporting, you know, the work that we do.
Thank you, Rob. This was great, a really great presentation. Any public, any board comments or questions for Rob?
Yes, I wanted to say this is a spectacular presentation. Thank you very much. You know, I'm a big fan of yours and everybody on the Historical Commission and what you're doing. There really is so much here in Tridifrin that so many people don't even realize. And I appreciate all that you and your team are doing to bring it to the forefront. Thank you.
Any public questions or comments?
That was really very nice. Thank you so much. Can you give an address or something for people who would like to become more involved in this project?
Sure, thank you. Thank you for the idea. I think the way that we present that is to write to tridifrin@tridifrin.org. And Ms. Hoffman directs those inquiries to us. And we'd be very happy to have you and any of your colleagues, friends, support our work.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thanks, thanks, Rob. It was really great. Appreciate it. And now, we're going to go right into a fire EMS presentation from Mr. O'Leary.
Tough one to follow there.
Yeah, sure is.
That's a good question. Do people, we've introduced you to the public, haven't we?
I'm sorry.
Maybe introduce yourself to everybody.
Yeah, certainly, certainly. Good evening, everyone. If you don't know me, my name is Joe O'Leary. I am the Director of Fire and EMS for both Tridifrin and Easttown Townships. I'm happy to be here. We're going to give you some information regarding the future of the emergency response here in Tridifrin and Easttown as it pertains to fire and EMS services. Before we get started, I just wanted to say a few things, if I could. I wanted to welcome some of my colleagues that are in the room tonight. From the Berwind Fire Company, we have EMS Captain Mike Baskin. We have President of the Board of Directors, Andrew Emery. From the Paoli Fire Company, we have Assistant Chief Bob Robey. So thank you all for being here and thanks for the collaboration. And then finally, I just wanted to add to the record from, I'm sorry, from Paoli Fire Company in particular, the retirement of Chief Andrea Testa. Andrea's been with the department for more than 34 years, retired after several years as fire chief. Last Monday, we had the pleasure of joining her at her retirement at the Paoli Fire Company, where she was presented with a proclamation and citation for her work over the years. So I just wanted to extend my sincerest gratitude to Chief Testa and all of her team for the collaboration and the protection and safety that they provide the community each and every day. So thank you, Chief Testa, for your years of service to the community. Back when I, thanks. So back when I started in October of 2024, one of the things that was, let's call hot off the press, was a study that was done by Dr. Bob Andrews. And it outlined some of the needs and concerns and some of the future changes that should be made to best serve the emergency response. My role was created to best operationalize that in partnership with the three fire companies that service Tridifrin Township, which would be Berwind, Paoli, and Radnor Fire Company. For those of you that live in the Panhandle, you're familiar with the service that Radnor provides. Over the past eight or so months, we've had many meetings. We've collaborated on a weekly basis to try to come up with a rubric that would look appropriate for some of the recommendations that were made by Dr. Andrews and then some of the things that would help supplement the emergency response within both Tridifrin and Easttown Township. So at this time, we're going to move into going to move into some of those objectives and some of those goals. And at the end, I'd be happy to take any questions or clarify anything. Our goals for Tridifern and Easttown for the emergency response would be to continue the exceptional service to the residents and the visitors of Tridifern and Easttown Township. One of the things that we identified very quickly was the transparency and also the vulnerability of all three fire companies to let us know what their strengths, weaknesses, limitations, needs, wants, and concerns were. And that goes, you know, that goes a long way in my book, you know, to be able to partner with you to kind of figure out what is the best way to move forward. So that has been positive. We want to ensure that the appropriate units are dispatched and able to respond to emergencies. And that has been going on year over year for much longer than I've been here. But what we're looking to is, as the landscape changes, for example, I'll give you an example, 1485 Valley Forge Road is Berwind's substation currently. There's a section of the Panhandle that now that that station exists, may be closer for that unit from 1485 Valley Forge to handle an emergency in the Panhandle as opposed to Radnor, just based on some logistics. So one of the things that we've been doing is working collaboratively with the EMS and fire leadership to determine who truly is the closest unit by mileage to make sure that you're getting appropriate service all of the time. Status management of our system, particularly apparatus and response teams is something that we're looking very closely at. And we want to make sure that we continue that service that you deserve. Maximize our ability to respond to overlapping calls for service. What I mean by that is, you know, we want to make sure that if we have multiple calls at the same time, whether it be an EMS call and then a fire call comes in in relatively short order following that, we want to make sure that we're getting you a unit or a resource as timely as possible, that we're able to handle multiple overlapping emergencies in this town in a timely manner. That has been happening year over year. What we want to ensure is not only that a fire truck or an ambulance is showing up at your house, but that it's appropriately staffed and that it has the number of qualified personnel onboard to be able to handle your emergency in a timely manner. We also want to minimize some of the ancillary tasks for the volunteer members and really focus on the fire response. And what I mean by that is, over the past several years, the fire service and the emergency response has grown exponentially in some of the ancillary tasks that we have to handle. Some of those things are, you know, complaints from the community, questions from the community, fire inspections, you know, different things that are required for different commercial buildings that may need a walkthrough, questions from residents or visitors. And that just becomes untenable for somebody that is volunteering their time, that now has a family, that has a full-time job, you know, that's trying to spend some time with a work-life balance. So what we've really looked to do is sit down with all three fire companies, figure out some of those things that are just untenable for them to manage. And we want to take some of them off their plate to ensure that they have some time to really do what they got into business to do, which is respond to fire calls and help the community. Some of the things that we're looking to standardize as we move forward in our fire and EMS plan is we want to make sure that we standardize the qualifications. And what I mean by that is, we want to make sure that everybody is certified to the same level so that we know that we operate on the same page whenever we go to an emergency. We look for the response, standardizing our operating guidelines. An example of that would be, you know, if the fire engine makes a response, the engine's primary role would be fire suppression, next followed by the piece of aerial apparatus or a ladder truck with a ladder on top. And we would want them to ventilate the structure, enter the structure, and search the structure, right? So we want to make sure that we're standardizing that so that we know that as those pieces of apparatus make the response, what their role will be, you know, moving forward. And making sure that we are cognizant of what units and what stations have which type of apparatus and how we can best utilize them on a location-based system where the closest ladder will be dispatched, the closest engine will be dispatched, the closest rescue, so forth and so on. Our organizational leadership, what we really want to do is create an org chart that is conducive to success in this town to make sure that everybody knows what their role is when they arrive, everybody's included in the emergency response, and regardless of what color shield or, you know, what station you're from, we all operate, you know, collaboratively to make sure that the emergency is handled in a timely manner and that it's efficient as possible so that, you know, regardless of who shows up at your house, you're getting the same great quality service that you're getting no matter where you live in town. And then finally, some of our reporting, right? So we're looking to standardize some of the monthly reports that come through to the supervisors and to the staff to figure out exactly what some of those benchmarks, metrics, and standards are that we measure against to make sure that we're doing the best job that we possibly can for you. We'd also like to minimize the duplication of resources and the elements of the emergency response. So what I mean by the duplication of resources is, based on the location of each of the fire departments and our mutual aid partners, making sure that, you know, if we have a, if we have a piece of apparatus that is appropriate to make a response as a ladder truck, that we know that every, you know, that every fire department maybe doesn't need that same ladder truck. We want to make sure that we're being responsible with everybody's money to make sure that the appropriate resources not only be in dispatch, but we're not duplicating those resources, you know, especially on top of the fact that we don't have as many volunteers as we used to. So sometimes it's difficult to get that apparatus on the streets. We want to make sure we're being a good steward of the dollar as well, to make sure that we're not duplicating our resources. And then finally, we want to streamline the finance. And the way it currently works is, each of the fire companies submit their budget at the end of the year to each of the townships. They vote on that, it's approved, and then on a fee schedule, those things are provided to both Paoli, Radnor, and Emberwind on a fee schedule. And what that means is that both Tridifern and Easttown each have to cut a check to the respective fire companies on, I believe it's a quarterly basis. Would that be appropriate to say? Quarterly basis? So what we're trying to do here is make sure that, in an effort to kind of collaborate in the best way possible, is my job would be to meet with each of those respective fire companies, talk about the budget, figure out exactly how much money we're going to need for the following year, bring that to the Board of Supervisors as one cohesive number so that we're able to say, you know, this is how much we're going to need for the emergency response in the upcoming year. Once that would be approved, the Tridifern Easttown umbrella would, the money would flow into that umbrella organization, and then we would allocate the money that will be needed on, you know, monthly, quarterly, however you wanted to do that, to make sure that the fire companies are being supported appropriately so that they can continue to serve. One of the things that we've really worked, you know, I want to say hard on, but it really was a slam dunk as far as I'm concerned, is that the volunteer participation is paramount to this success. I want to make it extremely clear that although we've seen, you know, nationwide, the number of volunteers starting to decrease within, you know, the country, we still have a really good core group of volunteers in this town. Some of the things that, you know, limits our ability is, you know, kind of the circle of the fire service, if you will, are, we have some younger folks that get involved, they get trained, they do a great job, they're at home with mom and dad, then they go off to college. So we see them during breaks or during summer and things like that. Then following that, when they graduate, they may stay in town for a little bit while they're living with their parents. If they can afford to stay in the community, they certainly do that. But what we see a lot of times is, as that circle progresses and we move into adulthood where we get married, we have children, we see a drop off for a period of time until they're able to give time again at a later point in their life. So, you know, but we have identified that we want to alleviate some of those ancillary tasks, but we also want to engage and maintain as many volunteers as we can. Some of the things that we've, you know, that we've been very successful in seeing thus far is the chief officer staff. Adner and Berwind have done a great job of supporting us from a command presence, and I'd like to maintain that as long as possible. Not only is that not only the right thing to do, but it's something that's going to allow those chief officers to get in their buggy, go to the fire, and go home. We're going to take care of the rest. We're going to make sure that you get the support you need, both financially, operationally, and administratively. And we're going to offload some of those ancillary tasks that are just untenable for you on a day-to-day basis when you're trying to raise a family and work a full-time job. Volunteer firefighters, it's paramount that we have them. You know, we're seeing a shift nationwide, not necessarily at every firehouse, but we're seeing a shift from the career staff, and when I say career staff, I mean the folks that are being paid to be there, that are supplementing the volunteers, to a shift where the volunteers are now supplementing the career staff. And that's for a multitude of reasons. But it is still paramount that, you know, when we have that career staff that's present in the firehouse, you know, our ask is not that you get out of bed five nights a week to chase the fire alarm at the local, you know, coffee shop. We're okay handling that with the career staff we have, but when we have a work and building fire or we have an additional emergency, that's when we really need to see you. And that's been markedly successful since we've increased our staffing levels to make sure that you have the, you know, appropriate amount of service. So that's why volunteers are so important from a firefighter perspective. As far as recruitment and retention goes, you know, we want to, we want to make sure that, you know, we're retaining, we recruit at a fairly decent rate. The retention, you know, it's not as robust as it used to be as far as the recruitment goes, but we get folks that really want to do the job. And most of those people want to do it as a career. So, you know, what we've liked to do is, you know, we want these volunteers and the opportunities for the volunteers to be as plentiful as possible. You know, having some of the career staff in-house gives us the opportunity for those members to come up and ride the duty engine. They're out the door fast, they're doing it with folks that are, you know, doing it on a daily basis for a career. It does help to be able to work collaboratively between the fire companies so that we have an interdisciplinary team of people that are working towards the common goal together. And we need to retain those folks because we need to see them, you know, move into these roles. Our goal would be to, you know, move them through the hierarchy and the org chart up to a, you know, a leadership role and hold on to them as long as possible. And then finally, we're looking for future employees and staff. You know, as I said before, most of the folks that are volunteering their time now, if you talk to them, I would say probably 60 to 80% of them want to be career fire EMS professionals as a career. You know, that's their vocation moving forward. So what we see in, you know, in a lot of cases is, they join the fire company, we get them fire schools, we give them additional training, they go to EMT or paramedic school, and then they go and find a job elsewhere. So what better place to do it than here? So if we can get them through the door, train them, teach them our way, and give them an opportunity to grow within the department, then we're able to keep them here, not only as a volunteer, but long-term as an employee. So we're looking at that as well. In this new plan, the volunteer fire companies would still remain, you know, part of the Tridifern Easttown Fire Department. As I told you before, some relief from managing the larger business-type tasks, you know, some of those tasks are calls for fire inspections, fire-related questions, payroll, HR matters, things that require a lot of attention and a skill set that requires constant, you know, upkeep. We're trying to allow for, you know, partnership with that so that we're not overburdening the volunteer fire department with those things. And then we want to make sure that the participation is heavily focused on the volunteer response. And I did touch on that before with the command staff and the overlapping calls. The current staffing model that we have, I'll start with Berwind Fire Company. There's an Easttown station. As you know, we currently have two cross-trained personnel up at the Berwind Avenue Station for the time being. Eventually, when the new firehouse opens, it will be on Bridge Avenue. And some of these numbers will change, we'll do a flip here of the staff. But the current time is those two cross-trained personnel. Cross-trained personnel means that they're both fire and EMS professionals, some are BLS providers or EMTs, some are paramedics and they're ALS providers. And what that means is that if a fire call comes in, they get on the fire truck. If an EMS call comes in, they get on the ambulance. The Tridifern Station, which is 1485 Valley Forge Road, there are four cross-trained personnel that are full-time, that work a 24-hour-on, 72-hour-off schedule. That is the benchmark or the standard of operation for most fire departments, the 24/72. In addition, we have two cross-trained personnel that work the peak hours, and that's from 8:00 AM till 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Gives us a total of 24 full-time personnel at the Berwind Fire Company. And then we have some part-time personnel, which is somewhere around the 30 personnel mark. Would you agree with that? And that's a combination of every firefighter is cross-trained on the EMS side at a minimum to an emergency medical technician, some are paramedics, we do have a couple pre-hospital nurses as well. Over at the Paoli Fire Company, we have the Darby Road Station. That has three cross-trained personnel, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's a 24/72 schedule. They have one cross-trained personnel that works their peak hours. And then additionally, we have an Atwood Road Station, which is fairly new to the operation, and that was to supplement the northern part of Tridifern Township. And that's proven itself to be valuable to the residents up there. That gives us a total of 12 full-time at Paoli and about 15 part-time. The 2026 operations, what does that look like? And this is kind of where we get into, let's call it the meat and potatoes of what the operation's going to look like moving forward. The fire headquarters or the Tridifern Easttown Fire Department is projected to exist at 1485 Valley Forge Road. What we'd like to do there in the 2026 calendar year is have our fire and EMS and departmental administration. My office would be there. When I get to a later part here, I'll give you a little bit of insight into what we're looking to do from an administrative standpoint for 2026. It would also house a MICU, which is a paramedic and an EMT, which would be those cross-trained firefighter EMS personnel on a 24/7 basis. The benefit of having not only the staff there, but myself and some of the administrative staff is, we're also cross-trained for fire and EMS. So if you would have a need for an emergency response in that section of Tridifern Township, or if we needed to go a mutual aid partnership, I could very easily transition to the fire trucker EMS unit and make the response as well to supplement and not have to, you know, in relatively short order, hire a load of people to satisfy the minimum requirement. So I do believe that that's beneficial. And then we would have, at the Bridge Avenue Station, which would be 23 Bridge, we would have one MICU, which is a, again, an ALS-capable transport unit, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And then we would have one staff piece of fire apparatus, and that will be equipped with four firefighter EMTs or paramedics, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Those full-timers would work the same 24/72 schedule. Our total anticipated staffing for 2026 would be three to four administrative personnel, myself being included in that. Additional staff that we would be looking to bring on in 2026 would be a life safety department, and that would be a fire marshal or a life safety inspector. And what they would be looking at is taking care of some of the commercial building properties and ensuring that they're safe for all of you to not only patronize, but if it's a restaurant, eat inside and things of that nature, really start to look at the fire code. It's also an opportunity to generate some building inspections to ensure that everything is safe and generate some revenue to offset the cost of that position. And then we would, down the line, we'd be looking to hire some sort of HR professional administrative assistant that would kind of have a, let's call them a jack-of-all-trades that had a little bit of additional background that we could utilize for some of the day-to-day administrative tasks. And then we would have 28 fire and EMS personnel. In 2025 would be the first time that Berwind Fire Company hired EMS-only paramedics. It's proven itself to be, I don't want to speak for Michael, but I think it's been extremely valuable to have those folks onboard the ambulance on a permanent basis. It allows for a more timely response for EMS emergencies. Our township fire companies as they exist today, Berwind Fire Company, as I said, they have one location at, it will be 23 Bridge Avenue and then 1485 Valley Forge Road. There was an intermunicipal agreement that was reached between both Tridifern Easttown Townships and the Berwind Fire Company to partner together for fire and EMS services. What we've decided is that in 2026, well, right now, we're starting to, we continue to work collaboratively to bring the dream to kind of reality here where we're all working together to kind of create this entity and ensure that, you know, we're serving the mission moving forward, you know, in partnership with Berwind Fire Company to deliver the service to their section of town. And what our next steps would be in that, in that intermunicipal agreement would be to meet with the leadership on both the administrative and the operations side, to really come up with some sort of rubric for what that contribution would look like for the volunteer side of the house. And then, you know, we would handle a lot of the career operation. And that would allow us to determine what the contribution would be to Berwind moving forward. We sat down and we've worked very, very closely with Paoli Fire Company. We've had an opportunity to look at some of their, some of their mission profile, some of their statistics, a lot of their guidelines. And what we've decided kind of collaboratively is that, is that they're interested in partnering with us for some of our emergency response and some of our synergies, which would be some of the standard operating guidelines, the personnel requirements, staffing, qualifications, things of that nature. But based on where they are at the current time with the amount of membership that they currently have, particularly active membership, and just kind of everything that's kind of going on with the change in leadership in relatively short order would come, you know, the possibility that everybody would kind of move over to this, they've asked if we could kind of allow them to remain, you know, independent, if you will, for the time being. And we would continue to partner with them for the emergency response. There will be no change in the current operating structure at this time for Paoli Fire Company. They will continue to operate in the same way that they have previously. And then we'll sit down with them in the near future as well with their fire EMS and administrative leadership to really figure out exactly what funding and contribution they would need to be able to move forward so that we can continue to service, you know, the entire municipality. So what does that mean, right? So what it means is that Paoli will continue to service the part of Tridifern Easttown Townships. We're going to operate collaboratively with their leadership and our leadership to make sure that we continue the quality service. Paoli EMS units will remain under the Paoli Fire Company EMS license. They'll continue to collaborate with us for response expectation, response cards, operations, just in the same way that we have thus far since I've been here and long before me. And then we're going to continue to open the conversation and allow the discussion to be had about welcoming, you know, transitioning away from the current model and joining Tridifern Easttown in this initiative if and when the time comes that they're ready to do so. What does this cost? So the estimated salaries and benefits for the 2026 year would be somewhere between the 3.5 and 4.2 million dollar, you know, price point at this point. What does that mean and what's different from, Dad, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. What does that mean? So that means that, you know, we have better allocation of staff, you know, they work for the same department, we have a greater depth, no matter where we ask them to work or what unit we ask them to work on, they kind of all fall in the same pool. It kind of eliminates, the big thing here for the payroll moving forward is that it eliminates the organic overtime that's being produced as fire company employees. So that 24/72 schedule, as it stands right now, there's build-in overtime in that schedule just based on the amount of hours per week that those providers and fire and EMS personnel work. When they become the governmental or municipal employees, that would take that number well beyond the 40-hour-per-week or 80-hour-per-pay. or 80-hour-per-pay overtime structure. And that would allow us to keep the, you know, keep the overtime to a reasonable, to a reasonable level. That's one of the biggest benefits to the salary structure of becoming a municipal employee. So 2026 leadership, what does that look like? So my position would be the, would be the director and essentially the department chief as far as the, the organization goes. We would separate, eventually we would branch out just a little bit further than what you see here. But in 2026, what we'll have is an operations division. That'll include, below, below the, the director would be the career captain and the volunteer fire chief. Beneath that would be all of our career staff. On the volunteer side, we would have the volunteer chief officers. We would have the volunteer officers, which includes lieutenants, captains. And then we would have the volunteer firefighters. Then in the life safety division, we would have the fire marshal, who would be the deputy chief of life safety at that point. What's the anticipated timeline? So some of the things, I think this is a very important question to address. You know, we're currently working on the Articles of Incorporation. And what those Articles of Incorporation do is give us a, an organization. And why that organization is so important is because we do have this intermunicipal agreement. And within that intermunicipal agreement, the Articles of Incorporation will give us an opportunity to house those assets. And those assets would be 23 Bridge Avenue, 1485 Valley Forge Road, the squad that we currently own, and an ambulance as well. That would give us, that article incorporation is our number-one priority right now. We are, it's sitting right now with municipal solicitors and staff, and we're hoping to have a target approval date next month when we come to this meeting. And we're hoping to bring that to fruition at that time. So that's the target date for that. We're also currently working on a transition team model. And the transition team for me was a really big matter, and it's very, very important. I think what the transition team is going to do is, you know, it's not necessarily my department, it's our department, right? So we want to make sure that we're considering everything that we need to consider and that nothing gets missed. So what we're going to do is we're going to compile this group that will consist of several different organizations. And, you know, the transition team will have three different divisions. We'll have a finance team. And they're going to really focus on the cost evaluation in the budget and how much it's going to cost to operationalize. We also have an administrative team, and we're going to start right back at the foundation. And we're going to determine what our mission and vision's going to be, what our logo's going to look like, what color's the apparatus going to be. You know, all of those things that an administrative team would do. And then we would have an operations team. And the operations team would work on some of our standard operating guidelines. That's how we respond to calls, how we staff emergencies, what the response order would be, and how things are kind of laid out. What uniforms are we going to wear? What color turnout gear would we have? What do we want it to say on the back? How are we going to partner best together to make sure that the operation is done in a, in an efficient manner but a proud manner as well? And we're going to give everybody within the, within the organization, the operation to have a voice at the table so that we do this right the first time. And, you know, that, that, that would come to the summer and the fall of 2025. And that would be the opera, the opening of Station Two. And that would be over 23 Bridge Avenue. Very, very excited about that. Then in fall of 2025, we would have an internal job posting for firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, so that anybody that's currently working within the companies would be able to apply for those jobs and essentially be moved over into, from a, from a, from a fire company employee to a municipal employee if they so desire. And then in the fall, we would look to post a, a job for the fire marshal. We would do uniform fittings, orientation, things of that nature to begin the transition to the Tridifern East Town Fire Department. And then in January of 2026, the department would go live, and that would be on, you know, January 1st. I would say to you that this is our anticipated timeline. We're hoping that things continue to move at the pace that it's currently moving at. It's been, the, the relationship between all three fire companies, the townships, it's been invaluable. Things have been working really well. I really appreciate everybody's time and attention to make sure that this continues to go in the direction that it needs to. And, you know, we're always, we're always looking for, for new ideas. We're always looking for feedback. And I encourage any of you, if you have any questions, you know, to make sure that you feel free to reach out. I am in the office generally during the week. You know, I, I do run out a lot, whether it's emergencies or meet with the local fire companies, go see some of the folks in the community. Or if you're in an incident and you happen to see me, just stop in, you know. In the last eight or so months, I've been on a handful of work and building fires. And, you know, it just doesn't stop at the emergency response, right? We're willing to help you with any stage of, you know, getting you back to what your normal life looks like as best possible. You know, whether that's assisting you with the American Red Cross, helping you with the board-up process, insurance claims, walkthroughs, making sure that you can safely recover any items that weren't damaged in the fire. You know, we're looking to partner with you all the way through the process. It just doesn't stop when we put the fire out or when we get you out of the car or take you to the hospital. So it's very, very important that I send that message forward because I know that I partner with, you know, Berwind, Paoli, and Radnor to say it just doesn't stop at the emergency response. You know, we want to be part of the, the solution for you to get back to a normal life. And then, you know, kind of, we're still working on everything. But, you know, one of the things that we've kind of always said is that we're better together, right? And that's from the municipal standpoint, but also as a fire company, you know, working together with all three fire companies has been an honor and a privilege, and I want that to continue. And we really are better together. We can give you the best service if we partner and we serve the community in the best way possible. So that's kind of what we've done. And that's, that's everything I have for you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to take any questions if, if you wanted to do that.
Sure. Thanks, Joe. Any board questions? We've talked to you a lot, so I'm not sure. But public questions or comments? Thanks. I'm certainly written, I mean, if you have, if you want to follow up later, that's fine too. If you want to follow up with questions later, that's great.
Yeah, perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks. And now we have the Charter Review Committee update. Ms. McPherson.
Thank you, Chairman Miller, members of the board. You know, we just wanted to give you a quick update. Obviously, the board authorized a committee to take a look at the charter. The charter is basically the structure, power, and essential responsibilities of the township, basically like a constitution, if you want to think of it that way. So we are a committee made up of three supervisors, three staff, five members of the public, and our solicitor. So we're going line by line through the charter, which was adopted in '74. So it's been 50 years and certainly needs some updates. Some things can remain the same, but we are carefully going through every line of, of the charter. So the changes will have to go through referendum, and it's quite a procedure to do that. So, you know, we're trying to get through that as quickly as possible so we can get to the next step.
And when do you think we'll be able to distribute a, a version for the public to review?
So we have talked about that, whether we would have sort of a midway, which is where we are right now, kind of open house. But I think the thought of the committee was to wait to the end until we have everything. Because we, we have kind of, you know, as we've moved through, sometimes we go back or we, you know, think of other things. So it's, it has, although we are going line by line through it, you know, there has been some back and forth with some items. So we just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with everything before we have that meeting. We started in January, so we're probably about halfway done. Again, we meet monthly, so I would think by the end of the year, we would be having some public input on that.
You know, I think that makes sense. And just for the public, so you guys know, we would have more than one public meeting about the charter, so it's not like it's going to be one shot. We, we really do want to get input from everybody. But I think that makes sense, Erin. Any, any public, any questions from the?
We've had some blind spots. I'm happy to answer any questions about the project.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We hear a second?
Second.
Any board questions or comments? The only thing I would add is, Superzer Baskar can't be here tonight, but he had pretty extensive interactions with Mike about the project. So there's a lot of back and forth that went into this before, before it showed up here today. Any public comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the developer agreement and financial security agreement, letter of credit for Phase 1B of Delaware Valley Friends School. Mr. McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project may ring a bell to you as it's been in front of you once already. This school expansion project was approved by the Planning Commission in June of 2023. It's a three-phase project, known as Phases 1A, 1B, and 2 for the expansion of the campus. What's currently before you is for Phase 1B of the project. 1A was already approved by you for the developer financial security and stormwater O&amp;M. In front of you tonight is essentially the exact same agreements, almost in, in 100%, except that they're going to refer to the Phase 1B improvements. There's a development agreement and a financial security agreement. My understanding, through my correspondence with the applicant as well as Mr. Burgo, is that the stormwater O&amp;M agreement that we approved and had recorded for Phase 1A is still in place and will still apply to the future phases. So you, that you do not have that for you to re-approve for tonight. So for your consideration, we have these two agreements. And for your discussion, if you'd wish, or otherwise, motion for approval.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We hear a second?
Second.
Any board comments or questions? Public comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the following agreements for Mainline Padel LLC, 341 East Conestoga Road, pending review by the township solicitor. Developer agreement, a financial security agreement, stormwater O&amp;M agreement, Pendot Rightofway, and sanitary sewer facilities, operation, maintenance, and endowment agreement, and a stormwater best management practices and conveyance, operation, maintenance, and endowment agreement. Mr. McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This one's a little bit more complicated than what you just had. This is a project that was approved by the Planning Commission just this year in March of 2025. We were working on the agreements as late as about 4 o'clock this afternoon, to be perfectly honest with you. So the drafts that are in your packet and were posted have been slightly altered, hence the, the language that was recommended pending review by the township solicitor. I am happy to report that we did finally get consensus and final draft of the agreements I had circulated to me about 4:30 this evening. Couple of things I just want to make you aware of. The financial security agreement that you have should be accurate. The amount of the security is $332,000. This project, unlike the school project, has improvements that need to run into the Pendot Rightofway. So we have sanitary sewer and stormwater. In those circum, circumstances, we have agreements, as we have to be the permutee on the applications for the HOP's highway occupancy permits with Pendot, where we require the applicant to post what we call an endowment fund, which is 15% of the value of the improvements that are in the Pendot Rightofway. Because whether or not this applicant is present and whether it's a future owner, the township ultimately becomes responsible. So in case there's a problem, we have a perpetual amount. Those amounts were blank at the time that we have now completed those. We had to get some late engineer review to confirm those amounts. Long way of saying that I do finally have approval of the agreements from the engineer, from staff, and from the applicant as of about 4:30 today. We were able to fill in some of the blanks that were on those two Pendot agreements. And so I, I feel comfortable if, if you'll allow the motion as, as phrased, the pending review by the township solicitor. But I'm, I'm happy to tell you that they made no substantive changes to our agreements, forms at all. It was simply, we had to fill in the information primarily on the values of those improvements.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any board comments or questions?
Pat, remind me what this project is.
The, these are three Padel courts off of Conestoga Road. Padel is not pickleball, it's not paddleball, it is Padel. It's the best way I can say it. It's, it's a combination of racquetball and pickleball. You hit it off of walls, but they don't go all the way up. And it's got associated parking and an office on a small piece of property off of Conestoga.
Put in that little, that weird little piece of East Conestoga Road that bends off of, yeah.
It's the small, I think it's East Conestoga.
It's East Conestoga, yeah.
It's East Conestoga. It's really, it's kind of a weird, strange parcel, long.
Thank you for your input.
Thanks.
Anyway, that, that's where it is, it's in that, that little, little spot. So can I just, staff and, and Mr. McKenna? So are we, are you guys, everyone okay with the documents? I read them, I saw, I went through them entirely. Obviously, they were blank, so are we, you guys are, can ever confirm?
Yeah, so, I mean, I've reviewed them. Patrick and I were going over them pretty extensively, looking at the language and making sure with their engineer and our engineer that we were comfortable with the numbers. So yes, I'm comfortable with the document.
And the important one is to make sure we have that Pendot document agreement that shares the responsibility, so.
I, I noticed the blanks, so yeah.
Yeah, that was the last thing to come in. There was some confusion on the applicant's part about exactly what that entailed. And it, it took us several weeks to get that information from them. And then once we got it, it wasn't 100% accurate, Erin. And our engineer had to clarify it again within the last 48 hours. So that information is now acceptably in hand.
Okay, so we approve this, and if we approve this tonight, it's pending your final review. Is that what we're doing?
Correct. But I am, I am here to tell you that I, I am comfortable with the drafts that we got. And I circulated those final drafts to the township just before 5 o'clock today. But yes, that's correct. That's what we're asking.
That's what we're asking, okay, all right. Any, any board comments or questions? Public comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to allow engineering department staff to advertise and receive bids for Gregory Lane Stormwater Project. Mr. Burgo.
Chairman Miller, members of the board. Gregory Lane, we have a project that's included in the Tridifern Township five-year capital plan for this project. It is a stormwater improvement project and stormwater management project on the sections of Gregory Lane, right above the Jenkins Arboretum. It's a two-phase project. We're asking only for the ability to advertise and receive bids for Phase 1, which is the work in the township road and cul-de-sac this evening. This is a large underground infiltration bed, and there'll be a series of drainage improvements, inlets and piping and curb and paving that will go along with this project. We do have several grants that were obtained from both the county and from our, last year, our $2.2 million grant. We have a portion of that for ARP money for this project as well as township funds. So we're asking, just to do that, we finished the design. We're working on the bid documents. We expect we'd be ready to, to put this up and advertise it in June and receive bids in early July.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion? A second?
Second.
Yeah, I, I have a question, actually, Mr. Burgo. So isn't, I guess I, I thought that this project emptied out into the project in Jenkins Arboretum? Or how, are they linked somehow?
This is like the, we have to do the Phase 1 portion before we can do Phase 2. So the Phase 2 portion, we're actually working with the arboretum. They've have, they have a grant match for like a lower section of infiltration and bio-infiltration swell. But we have to reduce the water coming down to that location before that portion of the project can go forward. And they also asked us to hold off on that design portion and any work because they have certain restrictions on when work can happen in the arboretum property.
Is there any risk that the arboretum portion of this project doesn't occur? Or is, was this project still effective if that?
We have, we actually have a third grant for that project as well. So we have a DCD grant for that one. There's like about $205,000 for that, that grant. And we did get that extended because it was basically due to expire this summer. We've gotten it extended until next summer. And we have the ability to extend that if necessary for a couple of years from DCD, if necessary, if there's any kind of, you know, coordination, additional coordination with the arboretum needed. But right now, this is the, this is the, I would say, the meat of our project. We're actually doing a lot, large amount of reduction from the upper drainage area that kind of flows uncontrolled. And then it drains down through some residential properties and then through the arboretum and into Trout Creek, where we have a lot of problems downstream of there. So this is going to help drastically reduce the amount of water coming from this drainage area.
Thanks. I understand now. Any other board comments or questions? Public comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to authorize staff to execute a landowner access authorization agreement for West Circular Avenue. Mr. Burgo.
Chairman Miller, members of the board. This landowner access authorization is just a form that we need to include with our grant application that we're working on for that West Circular Avenue stormwater grant. As part of that, we're looking to do stormwater improvements in the road and in the right-of-way. It's township-owned area, so we, as the owner, just have to sign that form and include that with our application to be considered for that grant.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any board comments or questions? Public comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve Solid Wall LLC for Contention Lane Bridge Stone Masonry Emergency Bridge Repairs. Mr. Burgo.
Chairman Miller and members of the board, the following request is to approve Solid Wall LLC for the proposal, for their proposal of $25,450, as well as a $7,500 contingency inspection amount totaling $32,950. As you recall, earlier this year, we did some replacement of the wooden deck that was basically deteriorated. That work was completed successfully, and the bridge is in remarkably better shape than it was at the start of the year. When we uncovered that bridge and we did get a good inspection of the abutment walls, there were a number of areas where we have cracks and loose stones that you can actually just take the, basically the mortar's collapsing, so we need to basically do a bunch of stone and mortar repairs. And if we don't do that, that will continue to deteriorate and cause problems for the structure. So we are looking at it as something that needs to get done in the short term to make that, you know, continue to keep the stability of the bridge.
No, thank you, Mr. Burgo. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any board comments or questions? Public comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve Anne Abenozio Contractors, Inc., sorry about that, as a contractor and Princeton Hydro for construction inspection services for the Willis Woodcrest Upper Weedy Roads Stormwater Project. Mr. Burgo.
Chairman Miller and members of the board, this is another one of the projects that the township received some substantial grant money for. If you recall, last year, we received that $2.2 million. A large percentage of that is going, over $1.88 million is going towards this project, as well as other funding we have from the township. This is a large, regional kind of stormwater project that includes several roadways, including Arlen Circle, Willis Lane, Upper Weedy, and that landlocked parcel that the township had acquired. We will be installing a stormwater basin there, as well as basically redoing all the drainage facilities on these areas that are completely deteriorated and rotted away, all the way down to the existing stream culvert. There'll be an underground system up on Arlen Circle as well to further reduce drainage. So we did basically advertise this project with the board's authorization. We received bids on May 6th at 10:00 a.m. We did receive two qualified bidders. We reviewed those results. We did have the bid broken down into pieces, so we basically were asking the board to basically review, approve the base bid, alternate number two, which is the underground system, also including a reduction in one of the items, which is 1-44. So that was all identified in the memo. We're asking for that to be approved in the amount of, for Anne Abenizio, the lowest qualified And, you know, we basically are, you know, looking forward to this project. I think we've been working with this for a number of years. We've received resident easements. We've acquired property to do this. It's something that's been impacting the township and the region for a number of years. We've done a lot of work, public works that's been up there after large storms, working on that, so this is a really important project. We also have included the Princeton Hydro Inspection. This is for full inspections for that 12-month period of time for we expected duration of the project included.
Thank you, Mr. Burgo. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Yeah, thank you. Any board comments or questions? I would just echo what Mr. Burgo said, that this is a big project that will make a very big difference in that part of the township, and it is something we've been talking about for years. I mean, I think, when I think right and we ran, we were, four years ago, we were talking about this, so it's exciting to see it at this stage, so thank you. Any public comments or questions? Oh, we have one.
Just wanted to say, from the perspective of the Stormwater Task Force, this was an area with one of those pins that Rob mentioned in his talk. This is a big project in an area that the Stormwater Task Force identified as having a big opportunity for improvement. Steve has done a huge amount of work to get to where we have on this, and of course, they have many, this is like the third of the stormwater projects. So just wanted to say, you know, this township is making great progress on trying to address that problem, so thank you. Thanks to Steve, thanks to the board for the support.
Thank you. Any other public comments or questions?
Is this you right here? Yes.
David, one quick question, too, I forgot to mention. We are rejecting the alternate one for this particular project. If we can save some, we do have some contingency in the contract, like we had mentioned. If we do have those savings realized, if we don't have any harsh weather during this construction, which is in a very tough place to work, I mean, it's really hard to figure that out, but if we don't, and we can save that, we might revisit that at a later point in time, come back to the board and ask for that. But for now, we're rejecting that as well. We're just doing the base and alternate two with that other reduction.
Thanks. Mr. Clark?
Sorry, and I forgot to turn this off, but a question about the upper $1.8 million. Are we secure in that? Is that, is there any risk that we might not get that?
We don't see that at this point, though.
Good.
All that being said, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to authorize staff to issue an RFP for professional consulting services for the pension funds. Mr. Draco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Staff's asking authorization to issue an RFP at some point over the summer. We've been with PFM as our consultant for the police pension and our OPEB trust for almost 10 years now. There's been some changes at PFM, and so we feel like now is the appropriate time to look at that relationship and potentially see if there's others. I know there's other firms out there that want to do business with us, so we'll be working on that, and we'll come back with the results at some point, hopefully late summer.
Mr. Draco, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second, yeah, okay. Any board comments or questions?
Joe, is this a RFP for an investment manager or investment advisory?
Advisor at this point. We've talked what's called the OCIO business, where you really just turn the funds over to them, and then they take over the fiduciary responsibility completely. But no, we're going to stay with our, you know, current form, where our trustees are making the decisions on how the funds are invested with the help of an outside advisor.
And the reasoning behind that decision?
We have a very engaged group of trustees. They're all very knowledgeable. You know, they've done a pretty good job at managing what is now between the police pension and the OPEB trust, over $60 million. They've been very good stewards of that, and so, you know, I think that's something in the future we might want to consider, but we're lucky to have knowledgeable individuals that we do.
Because right now, the township pays for their liability insurance, the trustees?
Yeah, it covers the trustees, myself, yeah, the township in general. It's about $8,000 a year.
Do other townships of our size and pensions of that size utilize this organizational structure and using individuals, or is this out of the ordinary?
I think it's really dependent on the municipality. I think, I would suggest that one of our size and sophistication would have this structure. Smaller municipalities with smaller staff and not, again, not the ability to handle executing trades and stuff like that would utilize the other model where you're just kind of handing it off and, you know, just kind of getting advised quarterly of how the plan's doing.
I struggle a little bit with this. I don't think there's a right or wrong answer. I think it's, there's some grays here. I think there are benefits to having an investment manager and having discretionary authority and liability that, going to end of the day, line up with the firm, rather than with our trustees, who are getting good financial advice, but in the end, they're going to make the fiduciary decision what investments to choose from. I like that we have, of course, the insurance, and they're taken care of. This is a lot of money, and I would probably, if you had to weigh it, prefer that our pension trustees advise or consult with and have like a joint-making authority with them. But if, and I don't see the harm in getting a RFP for both IM services and IA services, to see what's out there.
Yeah, I was actually just going to suggest that. I think what I would suggest is, I could probably write the RFP to get both, what the cost is to have the OCIO and what the cost is to keep, you know, how we're doing it now, and then we can compare and discuss amongst the, you know, the board's finance committee on what we feel like is the best approach.
I think that makes sense. Let's get a proposal for both. We'll see the fee differences, and we can look at the performance. You know, our performance has been very, very good. I mean, it just has, there's no doubt about it. But anyway, okay, yeah, I think that makes sense. So we'll add, yeah, but let's get, just get both, let's get the information, and see the difference. I think that's fine. So we're going to amend this to say we're going to get a quote for both services?
Um...
It sort of says consulting. I think it's vague enough that...
I think it, I would suggest that it accomplishes what we're searching to do.
Yeah, and you've got it covered in your meeting minutes now, in my opinion. So I think you're okay the way it is.
Fine, okay, yeah, thanks. And it doesn't specify, so I'm fine with that. Any public comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to authorize capital purchase of six-wheel dump truck. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Staff is requesting board approval to replace a 2001 Sterling Dump Truck with a 2025 Peterbilt. We did receive quotes from GLSA for the chassis and Lancaster Truck Bodies for the body of the truck. The total cost of the truck as of now, with the current tariffs, is $241,271, and this purchase would be under the CoStars program. Happy to answer any questions.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any board comments or questions? Public comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to authorize capital purchase of two pickup trucks. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Staff requests approval to purchase two service trucks. The first truck would be to replace a 2006 F-350 that's currently used by the Highway Assistant Foreman. The second truck would be new to the fleet for the Sewer MS Foreman, who with his additional responsibilities has basically been sharing a truck, so that'll give him the opportunity to have his own equipment and stuff with him all the time. The highway truck would come out of the general fund, and the sewer truck would come out of 50% from the sewer fund, 50% from the MS4 fund. The chassis would be purchased from Keystone Ford, and the bodies would be purchased from Lancaster Truck Bodies, both under the CoStars program. The cost of each truck is $101,633,000 and was included in this year's budget. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Thanks. Any board comments or questions? Public comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve proposal from Promax Fence Systems for installation of a backstop at Mill Road Park. Mr. Draco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Staff is requesting authorization and approval of a proposal from Promax for $24,625 for the installation of a backstop at Mill Road. We've had one of the softball teams that's been using Mill Road requesting this for a couple of years. We've been working with them. They tried to fundraise the money to pay for a portion of it. They just weren't able to do so. But the utilization of the, essentially what's going to be a new field will be there, which they'll rent the field from us, so, you know, we're happy to move this forward because we know it's going to be used, so happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah, no, thank you. I understand the situation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any board comments or questions? Public comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to authorize proposal from John Snook for consulting services to the Historical Commission. Mr. Draco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, we're seeking authorization of a proposal not to exceed $20,000 for the rewrite of the historical ordinance. The funding for this is coming through a grant, as Mr. Williams noted. Staff will work closely with Mr. Snook, as well as the solicitor, as we work through the draft, kind of paragraph by paragraph, line by line, to get this approved. I think it's, you know, the timeline is to have this wrapped up sometime in the fall. There'll be an extensive public engagement process as part of this, which, again, I would suggest that, you know, people that are interested, you know, attend the Historical Commission, but staff will work closely with Mr. Williams on that process, as well as keeping the board and the general, public informed of the progress as we move along. We're happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
No, thank you, Mr. Draco. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any board comments or questions?
I did. I had just a brief question, whether the township has used John Snook for any matters previously.
Not in the time that I've been here.
Thank you.
Any public comments or questions?
Anne Murphy of Fire Berkshire Terrace. The ordinance committee did use John Snook, on a volunteer basis. He consulted on the woodland ordinance for us, and he's a very talented consultant. I know he helped rewrite part of the zoning ordinance for Malvern Borough to protect the historic nature of the housing there, and I think he's also, at least at the time, he was also a supervisor, so he gets a good perspective on things. So we were really excited about having him as a consultant, so looking forward to what he has to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Anne, that's great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that was a good, sure.
Very much for it. I did actually work years ago on your comprehensive plan, but I can't remember what year it was. I was working in tandem with Tom Camitta, and it was a long time ago. I also am, I'm chairman of the Board of Supervisors in East Bradford Township, which is also a CLG, Certified Local Government, and we also have to do some improvements to, fortunately, we aren't in the same position as Tridifferent, where they told us we're at risk of losing our status, but they're telling us, you got to do some updates. And they're very similar, so I already have some of the ideas in my head as to what to contribute to Tridifferent. I've worked already, well, a lot of discussions with Robert Emanuel about this, and also with Rob Williams. Rob Williams and I both serve together on the Chester County Historic Preservation Network, and Rob and I are coordinating a presentation to Preservation Pennsylvania in Johnstown next week. So anyway, I just wanted to introduce myself and be not just a name, but a real person.
Well, thank you for being here. This has helped. Could you turn off the microphone? Just turn off the microphone. But yeah, no, but thank you, that's a big help.
One quick question for you, sir. Are you familiar with any municipalities in Pennsylvania that have a historic preservation ordinance with isolated properties and not just a centered district?
Absolutely. I've written a number of such ordinances. My own township's ordinance is like that, although I didn't, I have written amendments to it, but I didn't write the original ordinance for my township. But I wrote the ordinance for East Ocean Township. I recently wrote an ordinance for West Town Township, which is still in the wings. And...
Well, your answer makes me much relieved, because I didn't know that was actually the case, so I'm glad to hear there are examples out there, that you've worked on them, you have allayed my concerns. Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Thanks. Would that, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. You're hired. That concludes the regularly scheduled portion of the meeting. Now we get to new matters. Any board member new matters? Any public new matters? Yeah, we have one here and then...
He's countering me. Makes it easier from calling from home. Carol Clark, a couple of questions for you.
Are you just countering me? Makes it easier from calling from home. Carol Clark, a couple of questions for you. How are we going to be paying for this new Berwyn-Tridifern East Town Fire Department growth? Have we given much thought to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have. We've given a lot of thought to it.
Pardon me?
Yes, we've thought about it a lot. I mean, I think if you want to, we probably should have brought this up when Joe was here, but we could go through, I mean, we're spending about $6.2 million right now to pay for staffing between all the fire companies. We think this is not that big an increase, or maybe even neutral, at least to start. Over time, I think we've said before that the fire tax is going to go up over time, because the volunteerism continues to decline. But this first step is probably not a big increase at all, if an increase, and we're still working on the numbers. As he said, he didn't present any real budget yet, because we're still working on all that.
I understand.
Yeah.
Taking that into consideration, when will we be hearing back from the library research group? I don't have the correct title for them, but they're investigating the rehabbing versus relocation for the library, because that's going to be a big budget issue.
Well, that's very, very early stages.
I know.
So we're just putting together a, call it a select committee probably, between the foundation and the library board, staff and supervisors, to start identifying folks that may be willing to start investing. I mean, we have very preliminary numbers of what a renovation would look like. It's 20, 30 million. So that's going to require donors, grants, township funding. We're going to look at the whole panoply of ways to fundraise for this project. We all know it's a worthy one, but again, very early stages, so that, we want to get some important stakeholders involved at the very beginning, to get their input for design and development, so they can feel like they're really involved. And so we're at the point where we're trying to identify who those people are. Like, that's how early baby steps are. But, you know, I think the energy's there and enthusiasm, and we've identified some folks that can help us get there along the way. So that's where we are.
Okay, thank you. And one point to go back to with the discussion about the fire, the numbers that are shared, are those the total for East Town share, I mean, Tridifern's share, or is that assuming a portion of the numbers that we're hearing are...
I don't know what number you're referring to. The number of firefighters or...
I'm going back to the fire.
Yeah, the firefighters are shared, I mean, the firefighters dispatched from the firehouse to East Town or Tridifern Township. So they're going, the firefighters themselves go to both townships.
No, no, I'm saying for the overall costs, as they're described...
I mean, it's early, I just said it's early, it's early days. Those are the, but he's just giving you the rough cost of the actual firefighters, which are the shared personnel across the East Town and Tridifern Township.
So then I think the answer is, it would be 70% us, 30% them.
Yes, but we're still, it's still early days. It's still early days.
A percentage split, but that's to be determined.
But that number was meant to be that, is that correct?
It generally breaks down 70, 30.
Yeah, so if I could, real quick, the, that was the total build-out number, and 70% of that total cost would be the responsibility Tridifern, and the 30% would be the expensive...
Exactly, that's what I wanted clarified. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Hello again. Congratulations on your new website. It's certainly a lot different from the old one, and I would like to discuss it with you for a moment or two, and ask you if you can make some, consider some ideas about the new website. It's very visual. It's much more visual than it was before. At the same time, it's harder to find things, because when you go through the, when you scroll through the list of services in the opening, where it talks about, I can't remember all this stuff, but it has little white windows on a pale background. You go scrolling through, they disappear, and then it's hard to remember sometimes where we saw what we saw and want to go back to it and try to find it. It's a little bit of a nuisance. Also, there is some information, that's not terribly important, but the more important is that there are bits of information that are no longer available on the website, and it may sound minor, but it's always nice to know, for example, when the Board of Supervisors terms end, or other boards, members of boards and commissions end. I do not remember seeing that in every instance. And even more important than that is the videos of the board meetings that are posted on the website. In the past, the, there was a little horizontal bar underneath the image of the board meeting, and by going through that bar, it was easy to follow the agenda that was posted right beside the image of the board meeting. If I wanted to see the section on the fire department EMS presentation, for example, I could go down the agenda, find where it is on the agenda, and go to it immediately in the video of the board meeting. Now, I have to sit through the entire board meeting until it shows up, or keep scrolling back and forth until I'm able to find it. It's an inconvenience, it's a nuisance, it's a pain in the neck. It would be nice to be able to find things immediately. Yes?
Go ahead.
I'm listening.
I was going to suggest that, I mean, giving us the comments this way isn't that helpful.
I'm sorry.
Giving us, just verbally giving us your comments, isn't that great? I think if you were to sit down and give us written, like, things we can do, because it's a new website, like, we're not opposed to making changes if they're helpful.
Well, first of...
Try to just give them to us like this, I'm like, I'm trying to look at what you're saying. I found my term right on here, no problem. So I'm like, is that really a thing? So I'm trying to, you know, it's hard to react.
Well, things can be changed, I understand that.
Yeah.
And I'll be happy to make a couple of notes and send them to you. I certainly don't mind doing that.
Super helpful, yeah, we would look at them. I mean, we're not opposed to making changes.
Yeah, I'm interested, just interested in having, you know, you do a nice job with so many things. It would be nice to continue doing what you did well into what you're doing well, you're saying? And just having that convenience with the board meeting website, web videos, for example, to be able to find things on the agenda in a moment without having to sit there and go through all this stuff to find it, would be a convenience.
If you send that to Pat, we'll take a look at it. We can, I can address that. So Gene retired, and we now, we don't have any, we don't do programs, so that's not going to change, like, the board meetings are there for you to see. But, yeah, we don't have someone going in and making those edits anymore, so that won't, that's not a website issue, that's a broadcasting issue, and that's not something we can do anymore. So the meetings are still archived, and I can, but any of the other questions, send to us, and we'll make sure we can address them.
Okay, well, I understand there are problems involved in any kind of thing, especially when something has been done and we want to make a change. But, you know, I'll be happy to do, tell you what I see, and if something had been done, we'd do it.
Yeah, we are, well, we're happy to take comments, so...
I'm sorry?
We're happy to take comments, so, yeah, please.
Yeah, I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hello. My name is John Sponseler. I live at 218 East Conestoga Road in Devon, and, let's see, I've been a resident there about 35 years, and I've had trash service all that time. Five weeks ago, they canceled my trash service, the hauler, for reasons of a dangerous curve, okay? So then I called other trash haulers. They won't pick me up, because it's a dangerous curve. All of a sudden, it's a dangerous curve. So I talked to Melissa Schusterman, I talked to the township here, this is five weeks, okay? Nobody's been able to do anything for me for five weeks. And the reason I'm asking you is because in your, I guess, the spec book, under trash, you provide a list of approved haulers to choose from. None of them will service me. So I've got five weeks of trash. What do you suggest I do with it?
Yeah, and I know...
Now, the only thing changed that's been so far, I'm sorry, is today, under that section of your spec under trash, the verbiage has been changed just today, which pretty much says, if you find a trash hauler, check this out and see if we can approve it. It's a different language. So right now, I'm without a hauler, I'm without a place to get rid of my trash. I can burn my trash. You know, I live right behind Whole Foods. I don't want to burn my trash.
I just looked up your address, sir. So what can we do for this guy?
Yeah, so you reached out to me earlier, and I connected you with Mr. Draco, and I know he is working hard to try to find a solution, because we've got to find a solution for you.
Well, it's been five weeks, and all I say, all I've been hearing up until this week is keep calling.
So this is the first I had heard of it, so I...
Well, that's why I'm here tonight. I don't want, I'm embarrassed to be here.
Yeah, so we're, I think, I mean, Mr. Draco can speak, but I know he reached out to Whitetail, and he's, he's going to do what he can to try to help find a quick solution, at least a temporary solution for you. So we'll, we'll keep that work and keep in contact.
Okay. I'll say that, so it's a dangerous curve, so what do we, what can we do about a dangerous curve? If we let a contractor stop performing their function, because they, all of a sudden, they say it's a dangerous curve after 35 years of drivers doing a great job on that road, I can understand it being dangerous. I mean, 25 years ago, I talked to PennDOT to get that one-lane bridge. It was listed as a one-lane underpass, but it was set up for two-way traffic. So I talked to PennDOT, they got it straight, they put stop bars, they signage the road up. So I put out, I, you know, I try to take care of things myself. I got Amtrak to clear the hillside on the other side of the, all the dead trees. That was just like a month ago. And that is a dangerous curve. And we, my neighbors and I have talked to the township for years about getting some kind of a warning system up top for these oversized trucks. I mean, every day, we get trucks, we get tractor trailers, we get school buses. I mean, I got a picture just last week of a full-size school bus turned sideways, right in front of the bridge, loaded with kids. And this is not unusual, and it's just, yeah, I agree, it is a dangerous spot, but it could be made a lot safer if it got a little attention and a little expertise from you.
Sir, did they stop servicing just your property, or also any of your neighbors?
Anybody below 197.
Below 197? Thank you.
So Rosados is taken care of. I'm the one right next to the bridge. I'm the last one.
Yeah, I can see that. I was wondering if it was just you, or if there was, you're saying there's more than that, so that's why...
So be four of us.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's really about it.
No, thank you, sir. Let us, this, again, this is the first I heard about it, except for the...
No, that's why I'm here. I don't want it to be here.
No, of course not. I, but we got to get rid of your stinking trash. I get it. I'm not, I understand the problem now. No, thank you. And let's talk about the curve, too, and we'll talk about traffic, because that's something we could look at. I mean, I hear your problem. I understand your problem, so let it, give us a little bit of time. Not a lot.
Five weeks.
A little, no, I don't know about, I didn't hear about it five weeks ago. I heard about it today, so, yeah. But, yeah.
All right, thank you.
No, thank you. Any other public comment or questions? The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May, June 16th, at 7:00 p.m. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye. Thank you.